Good evening. Welcome to our regularly scheduled meeting of the Town Council, Monday, June 19th, 2017. Mike Rell, if you could lead us in the place.
(inaudible).
Could you just take attendance? Thank you.
Councillor Bellow?
Here.
Councillor Hammond? Not absent. Councillor Hurley?
Here.
Councillor Latina? Councillor Martino?
Here.
Councillor Rell?
Here.
Councillor Spinella?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Berry?
Here.
And Mayor Montanari?
Here, thank you. Our first order of business is Historic Society is going to make a lease payment tonight. So, we're going to come up and get that. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a few words to say, if that's all right. Good evening, Amy Woodorf, Seventeenth Center Street. I am the Executive Director of Weathersfield Historical Society. Weathersfield Historical Society was founded as a private nonprofit by local residents in 1932. Today, over eighty-five years later, Weathersfield Historical Society continues to meet the objectives of its founders in our mission to preserve and promote Weathersfield's history and culture to inspire people today and tomorrow. As Weathersfield Historical Society is a community organization founded, funded, and governed by our community members, none of these services would be possible without the support of our members, both their financial support and their gifts of their time and talent. We are proud to partner with the town of Weathersfield to administer four of its historic buildings so that they may be preserved and available to the public. In 2016, the society spent over $175,000, fifty percent of our total budget, to maintain these buildings and keep them open free of charge to the public. In 2016, the society once again presented over seventy public programs or special events, many of them offered free of charge. We served over 20,000 physical visitors to our sites. Another 50,000 used the resources on our website. Over 2,100 of those visitors to our sites were students for school tours. Most of those students are from Weathersfield Public Schools who visit free of charge, thanks to our grant from the Robert Allan Keeney Memorial Fund. Among those student visitors are students in Weathersfield High School's Weathersfield Studies Program. Last year, the Historical Society expanded its role beyond providing weekly tours of our sites to partner with the high school and Weathersfield Studies teacher Cheryl Reiba to write curriculum and teach in the classroom using primary resource documents and collection objects in addition to site tours to enhance students' understanding of their place in the history of our community. We have successfully implemented several new programs for Weathersfield Studies students and are proud to have them present a history fair at the high school last December. And on view now in the main hall of the Keeney Center are those history fair projects and the Students Wish You Were Here postcard project. Please visit the Keeney Center and enjoy the students' work, perhaps during our free Keeney Coolers concerts coming up next month. This is one of the most important services the society provides for the town, the opportunity for our children to learn about the long heritage of our community, all periods of our town's history, and how that heritage affects their lives today and that their accomplishments can affect the lives of those who come after us. We are proud to serve our community, schools, and proud of the students who learn from our exhibits and programs. I'd like to say thank you, Mayor Montanari and Councillor Rell, our Town Council liaison, for all of your support during the year. Weathersfield Historical Society is proud to be partners with the town of Weathersfield in serving our vibrant community and preserving its heritage. We look forward to providing many more enjoyable events and learning opportunities for our community for many years to come. Mayor Montanari, we have the annual rent payment of one rope of red onions for the Venerable Cove Warehouse, as is our tradition.
Thank you.
Thank you. We need a floor wash.
My pleasure.
And you're nice and colorful, Amy. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Thanks very much. Nice to see you.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you for all your work all year, Amy. I know you do a lot for the district and we're grateful to have you and your staff. Our first order of business is a public comment on a public hearing item, a resolution authorizing the issuance of not exceeding fifty-five, five point five million, rather, refunding bonds for payment in whole or in part of the outstanding principle of any interest or any call premium on the town of Weathersfield's 6.855 million general obligation bonds issued of 2009 and 22 million general obligation bonds issued 2014 and for all costs related thereof. This was posted as a public hearing item and for the first part of our public comment this evening, anybody wishing to speak on this particular resolution which is up for action? Anyone wishing to speak this evening on that resolution? Anyone wishing to speak on that resolution? One more time? Okay. I declare the hearing closed and we'll move into general comments public on any item. Anyone wishing to speak this evening on any item of interest? Mr. Young?
Good evening. Robert Young, 20, Copper Mill Road. I was not too happy with your vote last meeting regarding Mortgage Field, and that is now mortgaged. The fact that we have eternal life programs in this town is pathetic. No matter what happens to that field, forever and ever, you will keep spending on it. I was surprised Tony had, Mr. Spinella, had introduced that and then he voted against it. While I sat out here, I didn't realize he voted against it. And I give him credit for voting against it. The rest of you get no credit. I think eternal life is what this town stands for in all its programs. And another program would be the one that we just saw a few moments ago, the handing over of a rope of onions. The money that we should be putting in our pockets is going in their pockets. And they give you a rope of onions, the most expensive onions probably in the world, when you figure what they, what little they give us in rent for the Standish House, the Keeney Center, and what they rent, take in for rent for whatever. Standish House, I don't know what they take in for rent at the Keeney Center, but they definitely rent rooms. And we go in there and we pay full rate for a room, but we gave it to them for a hundred dollars a year for fifty years. We're a generous group of people and we, our council does believe in eternal life for programs, and we saw it last week as well. I've been attending several meetings. I attend this meeting. I attend the Board of Education meeting. And I, let me back up for a moment while I'm talking about mortgaged field. I had made a comment, I think Tom had made a comment during the budget, at the very end of the budget process, about the statement that's in here. "We want, need, and welcome your input into budget process and how your tax dollars are spent." In big, bold words, letters, but you only care about what certain people want. The rest of them, they can go, you know what. But now that you're going to be stepping up to more eternal life program with Cottone Field, I should say Mortgage Field, I had made a comment myself back whenever, not long ago, regarding the mortgage field. And I made my comments, and I can't find it at the moment, but we do have Recreation Fund, we have Youth Fund, we have a number of funds in our budget that have a lot of money. And instead of going out and borrowing money, we should be using that money. That's what a household would use. If this was a household buying something, instead of going out and getting credit and they had cash sitting in a bank account, they would use that and leave a little "I owe you," like the state of Connecticut does. Little "I owe you." "I owe you that." And that's really what you should do. You should deplete your funds that you currently have and forget borrowing and then let them worry about getting their money back, just like we did. We got nothing back. One point some million dollars fourteen years ago and we got zip. Yes, Polly Moon said, "Oh, we gave this town of Weathersfield, Board of, the Town Council, seventeen thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars for the field, to help them pay for the field." The manager says, "No, that was for the consultants." So, you know, Polly's got something mixed up or else the manager has something mixed up. But the fact remains, all they had was seventeen thousand dollars, seventeen thousand eight hundred and some dollars to pony up after fourteen years. Mayor, you didn't do a single analysis before you voted on Cottone Field turf. You didn't, you have money problems with that, with that field in collecting gate receipts, concession fees, whatever else there should be. You also, money you do have coming in goes out like a sieve, like the management that we have here. Who cares? And the money just rolls out of that escrow account that they have. And you don't care. The Board of Education doesn't care. And when I read that the Board of Ed was putting in a batting cage, that's a fixed asset. And where are they putting it? They're not putting it in the school building where they're, that's what their responsibility is. They're putting it out in the back, which is the town's responsibility. And who's paying for it? The escrow account, bringing in gravel, bringing in process, bringing in a cement truck, bringing in a number of things. This is the Board of Education, who only has responsibility within the, within the building of the school. And you allow this to happen. You don't allow it to happen. You know it's wrong and you sat up here no more than two, one or two meetings ago and someone made a comment about that. And you assured, yeah, town's responsible for the grounds, the school, the BOE is responsible within, but secretively, and it is secretive with the exception of those few who are involved in it, and I'm sure there's several of you, if not most of you, that knew about this all along. Yet, how can, how can you make statements, Mayor? Talk through both sides of your mouth? Double tongue, whatever else they want to call it? But the fact remains, you had no business taking their money from that escrow account and spending it on fixed assets at anywhere. And I made a comment over at the board. Why do we even have a budget process? The budget process is a farce. The budget process is to look at the capital, in this case, the capital expenditures that we're planning on working on over the next several years and fitting them in and vetting them, talking about them, and then having you folks vote on it.
Thank you, Bob.
You did not vet putting in the baseball cage. You did not vet anything. You just let it happen and it was wrong. So, you really got, you're getting a credibility problem, Mayor. You know? And I'll be back. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Other public comment this evening? No other public comments? Okay, very good. We'll move into council reports. Council reports? Tony?
EDIC met, we got an update on the Fun Zone property. It passed planning and zoning on June six, subject to terms and condition. Demolition of the building, we were told, should probably occur sometime in August or September. The Vet Clinic on the Silas Dean is moving along well. Went by today, they're putting up siding and stuff. Ridge Road Apartments, they're working on the foundations there. Somebody has bought the Carmen Anthony property. And Putnam Park is working on the piers for the deck for their outside restaurant that they hope to open in September. And Lanuches is open now on the Silas Dean Highway for business. The committee is working on their Great Home Site Project, which is going to interface a bunch of different websites so that people have one place to go to, to veer off to, to find anything they want to know about the town. And they advise us Decor Fest is on September 16. Budget and Finance Committee met last week and reviewed the refinancing bond plan, which is on tonight's agenda, and a classification of an employee that was rejected. And they advise us the tax bills will be going out in July and not waiting because of, to keep cash flow going in town.
Thank you, Tony. Mike?
The HDC, excuse me, met last Tuesday to go over a number of projects in the Historic District of Weathersfield. One of importance to taxpayers is the replacement roof on the Stillman Building, otherwise known as the Board of Ed Building. It is a centuries-old building, has an original slate roof that is failing. There are a number of options out there to replace the slate roof, either with a synthetic material, asphalt shingles that look like slate, or a like-for-like replacement of the slate. In that order is the cost from lowest to highest, like-for-like being the highest. The Historic Commission, after review of the options, voted to table the measure. That gives them, I believe, two more meetings to decide on what to do. Being the liaison for the Historic District Commission, I did talk to them about the options, the financial concerns that we as a town and taxpayers have, mentioned to, I'm sure, a number of us about the cost of replacement. And they are going to weigh their options, look at what is available out there, and hopefully come up with a choice, or determine a choice, that is both aesthetically appealing as well as cost-effective for taxpayers in this town. And that's where we are right now. Their next meeting, I believe, is this Tuesday, coming up a week from tomorrow, and they have one more meeting after that to take it up.
Thank you, Mike. Council comment? Mike Rell?
I don't know if Amy wants to talk about it, your daughter was there, but I will defer to Amy if you want to talk about the high school graduation.
Thank you. High school graduation was Friday evening. Unfortunately, the weather did not cooperate, so graduation was held at Weathersfield High School, which was actually quite appropriate because this is the class that has seen four years of renovation of the building and they can now finally, you know, finally enjoy the use of it in its completion. So, graduation was a wonderful event Friday night and they streamed it live for those who are unable to be in the building.
Mike, you want to add?
Great. It's unfortunate it was not in Cove, but it was, as Amy said, at the high school. It was a great night and I wished them all the best. The best news of the evening, aside from everybody being safe and not injured in any post-graduation, graduation parties, was that this class had a 100% graduation rate as well. So, it was very good.
Any other comments? Tony?
Councillor Hurley and I both attended a library strategic planning meeting that the library put on. They had, Mike and I were there, somebody from the Board of Ed and various groups in town asking for input. They're putting together a survey to come up with strategic planning for the future for the library. They will be sending out surveys in the future to people and hopefully people will complete those and send them back to them.
Thanks, Tony. Okay. Jeff, you got a couple things you wanted to cover?
Yeah, if you bear with me, the MDC's here tonight with Derek Gregor. We're going to talk a little bit about the Goff Brook project because it's going to be kind of a disruptive thing down on Middleton Avenue, so we're just going to turn on the overheads, give you a map. Bear with us for a second.
Is it on?
And warming up. There you go. All right, introduce yourself, please.
Let me just get the presentation going. Mayor Montanari, Town Manager Bridges, members of council, my name is Jason Waterbury. I work for Metropolitan District Commission. I am the district's project manager for the project that we're talking about tonight. Also with me tonight from the MDC is Toby Krantz. He's the manager of construction for the Metropolitan District Commission. In front of you on the first slide, actually, not in front of you on the first slide, is a brief agenda for tonight. Just give, before introductions, I'm going to give a brief summary of what public outreach has been done to date on this project and what our plan is going forward, a little background of the project as far as why we're doing the project and what to expect during construction, and then just an opportunity for any questions you may have. So, to date, during the design phase, members of the MDC were here, gave a presentation in Town Council, I believe it was on May 2nd, 2016. In addition, during the design phase, there was multiple meetings held with town engineers, both Rocky Hill and from Weathersfield, and also from DOT. Any comments that were received, we incorporated into the plans. And then, moving forward, the project was bid in June of 2016. We had an extended bid review period and we awarded the project the end of 2016, early 2017. And I'll go through the schedule of construction in another slide. Going forward, we have, we had a public outreach meeting. Roughly four or five members of the public came, although I don't remember the exact count of numbers, the number of public that was invited, but it was the entire stretch of Middleton Avenue, all the side streets impacted, Mill Street, Uwet and Maple and a couple of the streets up in that area, too. And then we had a pre-blast meeting because there's going to be blasting for rock removal on this project. That was held on June 1st, administered by the Fire Marshal, Dignati. So, the reason we're doing this project is to eliminate sanitary sewer overflows. Sanitary sewer overflows really come in two primary shapes and forms. One is the pictures on the right-hand side of your screen, which is where you actually have a pipe, a physical pipe or outlet, where sewage, when it's too much sewage in the sewer will actually outlet to a water body, in this case, it's Goff Brook. Or on the left-hand side where the, there's too much wastewater in the sewer itself and that actually comes up and bubbles up through the manholes. In this particular project area, you're probably familiar with that happening along the Silas Dean Highway and on Uwet Street. It's a chronic problem, district's obviously aware of it, done numerous projects to get us to that point where that can be eliminated. So, the project area itself is the red line that kind of goes through the middle of your screen. So, just to orient it, the horizontal leg moving east-west on the top, that's Mill Street. Basically halfway between that is the Silas Dean Highway going north-south. So, the upstream end is actually the intersection of Maple and Uwet, which is that little dog leg. I apologize for not having a laser pointer, apparently it wasn't working. And then the downstream end is actually the Rock Hill Water Purge Control Facility, which is that yellow box at the bottom right-hand corner of your screen. So, the reason we're doing this project is to eliminate the sanitary sewer overflows, like I mentioned on the prior slide. If you look at I-91 cutting kind of horizontally through the screen, right where, right where I-91 cuts through over Silas Dean Highway, Route 99, actually at that point, is the Goff Brook sanitary sewer overflow. So, that's where the outlet is that goes to Goff Brook, eventually the Connecticut River. So, to close that overflow and also to eliminate the overflows on Silas Dean Highway, it had three main pieces. One was the upgrades to the Rock Hill Treatment Plant, which are ongoing now, expected to finish in middle of 2018. We have this project, which is the, basically increases the capacity of the collection system to match the capacity of the newly upgraded Rock Hill Treatment Plant. And then you had removal of excess flows to the best we could, which is the lining projects you've probably seen going on in town, going back to 2008 and even to present now, where we've aligned a good chunk of sewers. The project itself, it's about 5,200 feet of new sewer. It is truly a relief sewer, so it does not impact any local connections. It will take excess flows from that upstream end, the intersection of Maple and Uwet, and then bypass the other parts of the collection system, go directly to the treatment plant. It's about a 28 to 29 million dollar construction project, so it is a pretty complex project with regards to sewer projects in the district. Total contract time is 640 calendar days. So, what that means is, we issued our notice to proceed to our contractor on April 13th. That equates to a construction completion date of September 2019, and that's including two winter shutdowns. The district's policy has been that we do not allow contractors to do street work between the dates of December 1st and March 31st due to safety concerns, pavement management, and whatnot. However, this project's a little unique because of the tunneling aspects, which I'll get to. The contractor has already approached us that he would like to work during the winter, so he's in the process of working up what that schedule would look like. So, the dates I have in here are estimated, they're a little conservative from our construction manager, but we, once we do have a finalized schedule, working with either Derek and Town Manager Bridges, we can provide another update. So, the project itself, it has, like I said, it's about 5,200 feet of new sewer, both open cut, which I'll show pictures of, it's your traditional excavator digging in a hole, putting a pipe in the ground, and then tunneling work, where it's actually digging down to a set elevation and then drilling from that point to another open pit to install a pipe. In addition, this project does include some minor modifications to the treatment plant and then also restoration at the end. Again, the September 2019 date, that's 640 days from April, April 13th. If the contractor does work through the winter with the approval of the district, the town, and DOT, if it's on the DOT road, that date is subject to change, it would actually move up. It could, it would move to an earlier date. One other item that could impact the schedule is, you know, the DOT itself, due to issues unrelated to this project, DOT isn't, hasn't yet approved our contractor's construction So, this picture kind of shows where some of the tunneling work is and where the open cut work is. On the screen, the magenta pieces are the tunneling pieces, and you can kind of see blue dots, those were the envisioned pits when the project was designed. The blue legs in between are the open cut pieces. Now, it may look like a little mix-match, but it's, the tunneling work was selected based on the geotechnical conditions. We are tunneling through rock. So, where the rock wasn't shallow enough, then it's open cut. When the rock was shallow enough, we're drilling through the rock. The only exception to that rule is the piece underneath I-91 where we're doing an auger bore or tunneling because it's, you can't excavate that sewer underneath the deck of I-91. So, just some pictures, a lot of these actually were slides that I had also given at the May 11th meeting, but I figured that they were appropriate for tonight also. The pictures on this first slide right now are... But we, once we do have a finalized schedule, working with either Derek and Town Manager Bridges, we can provide another update. So the project itself, it has, like I said, it's about 5,200 feet of new sewer, both open cut, which you're, which I'll show pictures of, it's your traditional excavator digging in a hole, putting a pipe in the ground, and then tunneling work, where it's actually digging down to a set elevation and then drilling from that point to another open pit to install a pipe. In addition, this project does include some minor modifications to the treatment plant. And then also restoration at the end. Again, the September 2019 date, that's 640 days from April, April 13th. If the contractor does work through the winter with, with the approval of the district, the town and DOT, if it's on the DOT road, that date is subject to change, it would actually move up. It could, it would move to an earlier date. One other item that could impact the schedule is, you know, the DOT itself, due to issues unrelated to this project, DOT isn't, hasn't yet approved our contractor's construction So this picture kind of shows where some of the tunneling work is and where the open cut work is. On the screen, the magenta pieces are the tunneling pieces. You can kind of see blue dots, those were the envisioned pits when the project was designed. The blue legs in between are the open cut pieces. Now, it may look like a little mix-match, but it's, the tunneling work was selected based on the geotechnical conditions. We are tunneling through rock. So where the rock wasn't shallow enough, then it's open cut. When the rock was shallow enough, we're drilling through the rock. The only exception to that rule is the piece underneath I-91 where we're doing an auger bore or tunneling, because it's, you can't excavate that sewer underneath the deck of So just some pictures, a lot of these actually were slides that I had also given at the May 11th meeting, but I figured that they were appropriate for tonight also. The pictures on this first slide right now are open cut pictures from what was the original, the predecessor to this project, which was an extension of a trunk sewer on Metal Gate, Griswold and Fairland Drive. That happened about six or seven years ago. Similar length, similar conditions. What that did is also provide extra capacity to that neighborhood to eliminate basement backups and sanitary sewer overflows that had been happening in that area, the collection Now for the tunneling work, the top-left picture, that's a picture of a micro tunneling machine. That's not necessarily the machine on this project, but it's a representative, what we would expect type for this project. And then the bottom-left and the bottom-right, those are example pictures of pits. So basically, when the contractor needs to tunnel the sewer, what he has to do is excavate down to the top of the rock and then remove the rock either by mechanical or blasting methods, support the excavation, make it safe and secure. Then at that point in time, they'll start lowering in the tunneling equipment and the pipe. And that's what the picture on the right-hand side shows, is a crane lowering the pipe down to the ground. Now, there's a better picture on the next slide. The left-hand picture is that same pit that was on the left-hand slide, that was basically, it's the same pit on the left-hand bottom here, it's just a close-up. And you can kind of see up at the top of the hill, there's some cones in the distance. That's the next pit where he's drilling to. So in lieu of digging that entire stretch, that, that is tunnelled. So you have, you are in a single location for an extended period of time because you have to dig down, remove rock, get everything secure, but you're also not disturbing the entire roadway as you move up the road. So that's the advantages to tunneling. And then the picture on the right, that just shows what the inside of a pit looks like with the shoring and supports and whatnot, and usually has a kind of a rail or railroad kind of system where they, where they bring the tunneling equipment in, they'll bring the pipe in. And so what you see in that picture is actually a tunnel, one of the pieces of the tunnel machine being loaded into the hole. So when the project is all said and done, the plan is to do mill and overlay on some roads, trench repaving on others. There are some stretches of pipe where we're outside the public right-of-way or on private easements where we're going to have to reseed lawns or whatnot. There's no private property work planned, so you don't have any, like, that was one of the reasons I mentioned, we're, we're not doing any sewer laterals or water services or anything like that as part of this project. So you don't have any private disturbance. And then in certain areas where we are off the road, we will have to repave, replace sidewalks where they are disturbed. With respect to the milling and overlay, the plan, which matches the town's pavement management policy, which we worked Derek on, is to mill and overlay Uwet, Mill Street west of Silas Dean Highway, a small portion of Mill Street east of Silas Dean Highway, and then portions of Middletown Avenue. Now, as part of the Clean Water Project, the district's, the district has established policies and procedures for keeping other agencies in the loop, shall we say, with what we're doing and how to, you know, make sure that we don't surprise people when we show up. We're very familiar with working with DOT and Connecticut Transit. We've got people that have contacts in those, both those organizations. We've already met with the Fire Marshal on this project, obviously, and we've also had our plans, I believe, were sent to the Police Department, too, and we got comments back from them. We'll probably, we'll be meeting with them again, and same thing with Rocky Hill, to make sure, you know, we don't disturb any emergency service routes or whatnot. And then the school, the school transportation's a little tricky because obviously bus stops can change from year to year. We do have the bus routes for this year. There would be stops in our area, but we're waiting really for next year's bus stops to be established before we contact Board of Ed and work with Board of Ed as far as whether or not a bus stop can be relocated, or if it's a special needs bus stop that we have to accommodate. And that's, we have people that have worked with that before within the district. So it's nothing that, not a challenge we can't overcome. Now, the next couple of slides are the permanent work zones or extended period of work zones where what to expect. I'll go through them in detail, but if you have, if you want to copy this presentation and kind of show them and look, kind of look at them and study them a little bit more and think about it, I can also provide that. So the first slide is alternating one-way and also one section of road widening where we're doing two-lane road. The southern stretch, which is where we're tunneling underneath I-91, that is going to be an alternating one-way, and that's, we're expecting to be in place from July of 17 to December of 17. And when we have these alternating one-way patterns, we're going to have temporary traffic signals that would be brought in, so that way the traffic can be controlled from, through the work zone and also into the work zone if there's any driveways that are impacted within that, that footprint. The middle two areas, which are Mayfield and Casey, the Casey Lane area, we're actually going to widen the road and take two lanes around it, so the, the pattern will just, it'll maintain two lanes, but it'll be going around our work zone. The stretch at Mayfield, we are going to allow alternating one-way through that stretch, and that would be about of October of 17 to June of 18 is what we're estimating. And then the Mill Street piece, which is really from the railroad to Middletown Avenue, that's August of 17 to May of 18. Now, that, that Middletown, Mill Street section will show up again because that, that is a pit where we're actually launching in two directions. We're launching towards Mill Street and launching down Middletown Avenue, so that, that location we're going to be in for a while. The remaining piece of Mill Street west of the railroad is open cut, and we don't know what that schedule is yet. That's really subject to what the contractor can work out with his proposed winter work. Now, the location in the Middletown, Mill Street intersection, that's one of the pieces we're going to be at the longest time, that's September 17 to June of 18. In that situation, Middletown Avenue between Maple and Mill Street will be closed to, except for local traffic only. Through traffic would be detoured on Mill, Silas Dean, and also on Route 3. Then when you go on Mill Street West, I might have skipped a slide here. Nope. Mill Street West, this is the, actually, then you have the Silas Dean Highway crossing, where we're expecting to be there in November of 17. That's based on the contractor's schedule, we're doing it in three phases, which are the three pieces that you see in the middle of your screen here. It's going to be all night work per DOT, so it won't be during the day, and it would be restored to full traffic at the end of each workday. And then what this does impact is a little bit of Mill Street west of Silas Dean Highway, where eastbound traffic would be detoured, actually also Mill Street east of Silas Dean Highway, eastbound traffic, I'm sorry, eastbound traffic would remain open, westbound traffic would be, would be detoured. And that detour would either be Middletown Avenue or Maple Street, depending on where we are. Then you move west on Mill Street, and you have the open cut piece, which is the piece where that is between Signal View and Silas Dean. That would, we're expecting to be done in November of 17. And then the tunneling piece, which is from Maple Street to Signal View, would be April of 18 to August of 18. And what that also impacts is Signal View itself, where Signal View northbound will be open, but Signal View southbound, which is really from the plaza into Mill Street, will be closed. We're aware of that, it will impact the tenants in the plaza, so once we have a more detailed schedule worked out here, we are going to meet with the tenants themselves to make sure that they're aware of this plan and that they can let their prospective customers know that they're going to have to use Silas Dean as the entrance. And then when you go move along to Maple and Uwet, the intersection of Uwet and Maple, we're going to be there, we think, in August of 19, although I think that date can come up if the winter work does go through. And then the off-road piece, which is north of Maple, doesn't have any traffic impacts, but that's June 19 to September 19. And one of the key parts with that is, that is one of two locations on this project where we're actually physically crossing Goff Brook. And because of the wetland issues and to comply with the requirements for our wetland permit, that can only be done between the dates of June and October. So we could be ahead of schedule for everything else, but then wait and come back and cross Goff Brook there, depending on how everything, all the, everything sequences out. Now, as far as example notifications for the residents, the next two slides, I did steal from that first presentation. I don't expect we would have any more meetings with the residents, it would only be if there's really something that drastically changed in the plan. But in general, we do send out information of flyers on a project like this every one to two months or in advance of any major traffic pattern. So, you know, the first time we set up in Middletown and Mill, even if it hasn't, if it's only been a couple of weeks since we sent out a notice, we'd say, by the way, this is, we're approaching Middletown and Mill, we're going to be here for, you know, from this date to another date. And then additionally, I did hand out the flyer that was given out at the last meeting that has my contact information and also our field engineer, our resident engineer, John Malone, he'll be in the field every single day. And then also for residents, if they can't get ahold of one of us, there's our command center, which is Extension 3600, which will track someone down at the MDC. And with that, I'll try to answer any questions you may have.
How long was it going to take you to get across the Silas Dean?
That was forecasted in November, I, I would think it's going to be about a month.
A month?
I think, because it's, you're looking at shorter work hours, they got to plate it at the end of every single day. So it's going to, it's not going to be a very productive exercise. And that unfortunately could not be tunnelled because of the geotechnical conditions. Thanks.
I have the same question you have. If we have potential development happening on the Silas Dean, how will that be affected by all this?
From a sewer perspective, you're talking about Silas Dean and Mill, the potential plaza, is that what this is, probably the plaza?
As far as, I don't know if you're referring to development in the future, this will add capacity to the system because of the fact that they're bypassing flow around the existing system, which will open up more capacity in the system for future connections. Specifically, we have the Fund Zone property development that's coming in, and they've been in touch with MDC, we've put them in touch with each other. They've come to MDC for approvals, and we've spoken to MDC, who has said that they will be able to provide water and sewer service for that development. It will be where they connect, whether they connect in Silas Dean Highway or Mill Street is still dependent on the project's schedule for MDC and the development's schedule, but they're still working on those things. So as far as sewer capacities, yes, that, that can all be provided with what they're doing. As far as just construction coordination, they are still finalizing their schedules to kind of figure out, we, they have been in touch with each other about how we, how they need to coordinate to make sure that, you know, there's access in and out of the property as that development is primarily accessing off of Mill Street.
Thank you.
So the area west of Mill Street, west of Silas Dean Highway on Mill Street, heading towards Maple.
Yep.
When you're doing that work, are the, is there going to be a sidewalk open? Because there's a development nearby that there needs to be access to.
Any sidewalk, any sidewalk that we close, we provide a temporary crossing and make sure you can get to a sidewalk on the other side. So we, there are, I don't, I have, I'd have to look at the plans to see that specific location, but we do have areas where we put in temporary sidewalks and temporary sidewalk crossings.
There's sidewalks on both sides of the streets.
Okay. So then we would, what we would do is provide another crossing at, you know, probably Maple, Uwet, and then Silas Dean, to make sure they can get around safely, and we would put up signs that said sidewalk closed ahead.
Okay. And then the other thing was the winter work.
Yes.
Is there a cost effect, either positive or negative, about allowing that winter work?
Um, I would, we haven't run that analysis yet because we don't know exactly what work is proposed for when. That's part of the scheduled submission, they have to tell us what location. If it's just the tunneling work itself and just digging pits, it would not be a cost increase, it would be a cost decrease if anything, or net, because you would be looking at a shorter overall construction period. I doubt it would, I'm trying to think of how it would actually increase the work, the cost, but I can't, I don't think it would.
Okay.
And this will not impact water or sewer services for the existing customers?
Correct, correct.
And then on Mill Street between Middletown Avenue and Silas Dean Highway?
Yep.
That portion will be closed?
Eastbound would be open, westbound would be closed.
So there would still be access for the businesses in that stretch and the apartments?
Yes, and actually, the, the business, that plaza on the corner of Silas Dean and Mill, where Walgreen, I think it's Walgreens and Pet Supplies Plus are, the owner of that plaza was one of the people that actually came to our meeting on the May 11th. And his main concern is actually deliveries. He's not as concerned with customers coming in because you have the Silas Dean entrance also, but it's really deliveries because the deliveries come off of Mill, and we're not going to be blocking his driveway. So we've already worked that out with the contractor and him, where deliveries will not be an issue.
And the condos as well?
The condos, we would not be blocking any driveway to the condos. If you have a momentarily time where there's a piece of equipment in front of the way, that's always subject to happen, but we, that's why we have field staff there. We, next, you know, an excavator can be moved, a trench box can be moved, but we would not be permanently blocking anything.
Okay, and I have one other question. Jeff, there's a motion for, for funding from, I think, the CROG or the state, and isn't that in the same area?
Want to talk about that?
How does that, how does that play out with this MDC project?
Yeah, I was going to speak to that later. We do have, no, that's a good question. At the south end of Middletown Avenue, there is, there is local road accident reduction grant funding. We had looked at a project last year, we were, we were going to look at it, putting it in again. It does overlap with MDC's project. Right now, they are finalizing their sewer alignment through that area. Once they've done that, then we're going, we've been in discussions with them about what level of work they need to do in that area compared to what we need to do from a safety improvements perspective. So some of that work will be done by MDC, some of it will be funded by the town, and we're still working out those details with MDC right now.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Thanks, Derek.
Thanks, Amy. Mike, real?
Thanks, Jason. Quick question, it might have been up there. How many of the pits would you be boring? The vertical shaft pits?
Yep. Total or at one time?
Well, okay, I guess it would be, you'd be doing it in stages.
Typically, you have at least three pits open at once.
At one time, okay.
The other thing, this, where it gets into the contractor, our contractor is Baltasar Construction, they're a general contractor, they x-ray, they dig, they put in pipe, they would be the ones digging the pits. They bring in a tunneling specialist to do the tunneling work themselves. So what they want to do is make sure they have enough work staged for that tunneling contractor, so the tunneling contractor isn't waiting, and that's why you usually have at least three pits open. So while the tunneling contractor's drilling in one direction, they'd be hopping over, Baltasar would be hopping over and digging the next pit.
So those purple circles would be locations of the?
Yes, those would be the pits on there. There's a couple of locations where the contractor has proposed to us possibly drilling through the pit and then digging down and installing a shaft, and that is less intrusive, but we haven't fully evaluated that yet. That's part of the construction submittal process that we're going through right now.
And they would be in roads, not on town property, just like snowshelves or private?
Their entire stretch of Middletown Avenue is in the road itself until you get just south of I-91, and then it goes cross-country to the treatment plant through easements that we're in the process of, in the process or actually have obtained. And then Mill Street is completely within the road, all the way up to Uwet. Once you get up to, I'm sorry, all the way up to Maple, once you get up to Maple, there's a manhole that is slightly off the road in the public right-of-way, but in the snowshelf, and then again on the other side of Maple. And that's for two reasons, one, for traffic reasons, but two, when we cross Goff Brook on Maple itself, we, because of the DOT footbridge there, we had to be off the road. So in that stretch, we're, we've gotten easements from the dental office and then also cerebral palsy, and there's a proposed easement, which our, I believe legal council's working on from the town itself.
Just to add to that, Jason's referring to where the sewer's going to be, you know, post-construction. During construction, there is going to be work zones barricades set up that will, will be within the right-of-way, outside the road limits. So there are areas along Middletown Avenue where the right-of-way is set back 15 feet maybe from the road. That work zone may go right up to the property line. There's areas where we have road closures where it'll be right-of-way to right-of-way. So the work will extend beyond that, but it'll all be restored, you know, as part of the project.
All property owners would be notified or have been notified?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
We've actually already met with a couple of property owners, there was a couple of property owners that could not attend the public meeting that have already contacted me and I've met with on this project. So word of mouth, they tend to start to learn.
Understood. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Finance Director Mike O'Neill is here. We're going to talk a little bit about the tax bills and the motor vehicle taxes that we're going to kind of forego for now because we don't have a good mill rate for those. So, Michael?
Good evening. Mike O'Neill, Finance Director. Excuse me. As you know, the state's failure to adopt a budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st has been a topic of discussion during our budget adoption. has been a topic of discussion during our budget adoption process. And amongst finance directors, town managers, and others for the last several months, things are very much up in the air in terms of, really two things. The amount of state aid that we might expect and what will happen with the statute that currently caps motor vehicle, the motor vehicle mill rate at 32 mills, down from 37 in the present fiscal year. We have decided, we've talked to other towns, other, our tax collectors, talked to other tax collectors, and we've decided that the appropriate course of action will be to print and mail the real estate and personal property bills as we do every year. So those will be going out by the end of next week. And to hold off, typically what we do with a motor vehicle is everything is billed, the bills go out at the end of June. The full amount is due, there's no split between July and January. So what we'll do instead is wait, see what, see what the state does, and then mail those bills out at the end of December to be collected in January. Just in terms of the breakdown in the number of bills and what that means in terms of dollars that we would not be collecting right now, the total levy is about $85 million. Eighty million of that is real estate and personal property. That's split half and half, so we collect about 40, we would collect about $40 million in July and the other $40 million in January. The remaining piece, the $5 million, about $5.8 million is motor vehicle. That's the piece that we would typically collect in July that instead we're gonna wait until January. And what that means is we'll essentially have to float that amount to the extent there is needs for that cash from reserves. We have $12 million of fund balance, so that's, that's, doesn't present a problem for the town from a cash flow perspective. In terms of the number of bills and it just kind of why we think this makes sense, there are almost 40,000 bills in total that get sent out every year. 23,000 of those are motor vehicle. So almost two-thirds, more than half are motor vehicle. There are a lot of work. If we sent them out now and the state changed the motor vehicle mill rate cap, we'd have to send out an adjusted bill, essentially doubling the work on that portion of the bills. So again, for the cost of essentially having to float the cash flow on $5.8 million until halfway through the fiscal year, we just think it makes sense to handle things that way.
That's what we're proposing. That's kind of where we're working towards. You want to bring this to the council, make sure that you are comfortable with this. The process of sending out a second bill, we'll probably have to send out a second real estate bill anyway, but doubling up on the motor vehicle bills, that would create just, just a lot of work. So getting those right just one time is probably more effective than trying to collect that $5 million now and then rebilling. I think there's gonna be a considerable amount of confusion with an adjusted real estate bill if that happens to begin with, and then throwing the motor vehicle on top of that would just get, would cause even more disorder at this point. So we intend to bring this to your attention and kind of lay out the plan we have right now.
Yeah.
This isn't what we discussed in budget and finance, is it? Didn't we discuss, I thought all the bills were going out at once, no? Did this change since budget and finance?
This is a change. We talked about it, but we've looked at the scale of the number of motor vehicle bills at over 20,000. And doing those twice would be kind of onerous, yeah.
Why not send them out like August 1st or September 1st, once the state's budget has been finalized? Or what's the thought process in waiting till January?
January is just half the year. If we do get a budget and it's earlier, the council can make the determination and instruct staff to send them out whenever it's available as a mill rate.
And how are you gonna, how are you gonna get this word out to the public? Because this will be, I'm sure the tax office will be inundated with phone calls and questions, where's my car tax bill?
I have a press release that I'll send to Kathleen McWilliams this evening. Mark DiPaolo is here tonight. We'll put it on the website, and I've put the tax collector's phone number on the press release, so. No, but that is gonna be a problem. People have expectations this time of year on all their bills. And we have people that are very deliberate in their tax-paying regimen every year. They expect to do it, they want to do it, they come in specifically to pay their bills. So it will cause some disruption, and we'll just have to work through it. I think every town that has a mill rate above 32 is looking at the exact same situation.
And do you have a mechanism for people who prepay taxes?
We don't prepay taxes. That's, we don't.
So if somebody did try to, there is no mechanism in place for someone who didn't want to pay for part of the car tax or something like that?
No, we don't, we don't collect that. We don't have a, you know, that's got two and a half people in that office, so managing prepaid accounts isn't within their capability. Does it have to be at the end of the month or the beginning of the month? And the only reason I'm asking, you know, if you, if you sent them out December 15th, people would have the option for tax purposes to?
Yeah, it's just 30 days. So we have, we have flexibility.
Yeah. And I, and I. You can take away that choice if you do it at the January 1st. And that's gonna be an issue for a lot of people. They like to take that deduction in their, in their taxes. So if we do have the capability to send them out before the end of the calendar year, that would be something that allows that mechanism to continue. We'll have to take a look at that. Particularly if we're sending out a revised real estate bill. Probably want to send those all out together.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's really no good.
There's no good scenario. And we have, like I said, I mean, we've consumed countless hours, it feels like, kind of running through different scenarios. And it just, everything other than just the usual process that we always have has, has some disadvantage. You know, and it's the potential for confusion or disruption of, you know, the way people prefer to do things.
Mike, you were. To Amy's point, if people prepaid their taxes, they'd be paying at a statutorily required 32 mil, correct? I mean, we're assuming the governor's, what is current law would go into effect?
Well, I think the whole, the whole idea about holding on the motor vehicle is that we don't really know what they're gonna do. And we don't allow people to prepay anyway.
Right.
So.
I mean, the only prepay, if you will, would be if we mailed a bill on June 28th and someone came in on the 29th.
Right.
You know, but there, in that case, you've got a bill.
Yeah.
You know, in this case, there's no motor vehicle bill, there wouldn't be a bill. So someone couldn't, you know, I suppose they could find their assessed value of their car and multiply it by the, you know, the 32 mils, but there's no, there's no billed amount for that piece of property.
So those who paid property tax on their motor vehicles last year paid it on 37 mils? Last July 1st. This year, we're anticipating 32 mil.
Well, it's the current, it's the current law.
Current law. And then we do not know what it could go up to, correct?
I mean, there's talk of taking the lid off altogether.
Right.
Which would then equalize with the real estate.
Forty, or 39 and change?
Well, you would think it would go down somewhat because.
Oh, yeah, yep. Greater than 37, but less than?
Thirty, less than what we adopted at.
Right, 39, 7, 4. Okay. So for the, those out there listening, possible end of December, bill could be as low as 32 and as high as 38 and change?
39 and change.
39 and change, okay.
But I think it's a good point. As soon as we know, adjust and get them out so people can take advantage, even on the real estate.
That's a bigger number, probably.
Yeah, people, you know, I know I want mine paid by the end of the year to take that deduction, so.
If that deduction is still available after budget negotiations in Harvard.
When does the supplemental work go out?
Supplement, October.
October.
Jody?
So, just to clarify, this fiscal year, one property tax bill or two? If you're sending the regular property tax bill out in July, do you, so do you split? And I'm sorry that this might seem like a silly question.
You were just talking about, we're talking about real estate?
Just real estate.
Right, one bill, two payments. July payment and a January payment.
And then for car, we're gonna wait, but it would be end of December, possibly?
As late as the end of December.
With one payment or two?
One. So motor vehicle has always been one payment with a bill mailed at the end of June.
And then as far as supplemental is concerned, how would you be able to send a supplemental if you haven't even sent the first? Or are you just talking for property?
Supplemental bills are people that bring cars on after the original grand list died.
Okay.
We will, we will not send any bills without a mill rate.
Wouldn't be who of us. And then just a thought. To, I know the state statute that currently stands for purposes of motor vehicle or even property tax says that if you are not compliant with that state statute, that your municipality could face a 10% reduction in state aid. And I know in the municipality that I worked in, we sent a letter to OPM asking for the waiver just to kind of cover the bases, and I thought maybe that might be a good idea for us to do.
To waive what?
That you would not be penalized if you don't send out your motor vehicle bill by the statute date, that you would not be penalized by a 10% reduction in state aid.
I think if that's, if, if it's the same statutory requirement that I'm thinking of, it's a request that cannot be made until July 1st? I know that we've, we've.
There's no statute that requires a tax bill to go out. But it says if you send one out, you gotta give them 30 days to pay it.
There's a July 1 date, I'll pull the number for you. It's only the secretary that can offer the waiver. I know some other municipalities, Westport for instance, did the same.
I know the, the tax collector has looked at, there were, there was a requirement along those lines that she had done research on a month or so ago. And like I said, we just sort of had a lot of discussions, but, you know, we'll make sure. The tax collectors all talk and.
Oh, yeah.
We, we'll make sure we're in compliance.
Sure.
That's all we had.
Thank you, thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Wow.
Yep.
Anything from Dolores in her absence?
No, we're just very busy with the dogs. We're up to about 800.
Very good. All right, we'll move on to council action. 1A, I believe there's one resignation, Council Hurley. Here, Mike.
Alza. Insurance Committee, Robert Cobb, 99 Meadowview Road. A resignation, he was up from 7:114 to 6:3019.
Second. Motion to second, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, thank you. There are no appointments. We'll move on to the resolution. 1C.
Motion to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $5,500,000, refunding bonds for payment in whole or in part of the outstanding principal of an interest at any call premium on the town of Weathersfield. $6,855,000 general obligation bonds issued in 2009 and $22 million general obligation bonds issued of 2014 and for costs related thereto. Second?
Motion to second, Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. It's Mike O'Neill from Finance Department. Come on up and talk to you about this one too. Opportunity to save some dollars as we talked about during the budget process through the refunding of some already issued debt.
Good evening, Mike O'Neill, Finance Director, again. This item would authorize the town manager to issue up to $5.5 million worth of bonds strictly for the purpose of retiring bonds that are outstanding from the 2009 bond sale and the 2014 bond sale. We were, this opportunity was brought to our attention by our financial advisor, PFM. We are looking at saving as much, depending on market conditions, saving as much as $350,000 on a net present value basis, which means today's dollars, it's 350,000. It's more dollars out in the future. The savings would be spread over several years. As the town manager mentioned, the adopted budget, town budget for fiscal 18 includes savings of $40,000 from this initiative. What we've seen, and again, there's a little bit of latitude in how the refunding would be structured, but typical, you know, best practice is to spread that out. And doing that, we're looking at as much as $80,000 of savings in fiscal 18.
Thank you, questions for Mike on this? Jody?
Is it a 20 or 30 year?
These would be 12-year bonds, because you can only, the new bonds can't mature beyond the point of the bonds that are being retired. So those are, those, and they're, so there are particular maturities. There's, there's different interest rates when you sell bonds and the different years where the principal payments occur. So they're just particular years where those interest rates are, are high enough that today's rates make that, make the savings work. So overall, you can't, the, the longest maturity in the new bonds that we would be issuing is 12 years. Because the old bonds, the, are the.
Current bonds?
Oldest, or the, the, the old bonds that are being refunded that are due furthest in the future are due 12 years from now. You can't, so you can't use a mechanism like this to.
Extend your debt.
Create savings to extend your debt.
We're not saving because we're taking a longer time.
Right, you can't turn.
It's the interest rates better.
You can't turn a 20-year mortgage into a 30-year mortgage to lower your payment.
Thank you.
Mike? The additional $40,000 in savings, maybe to you or Jeff, where would that additional savings go? Would we put it in just surplus or?
That would be unexpended funds at the end of fiscal 18, and then it would be the, it would be the council's preference on how that would be treated.
It would reside in the debt service fund until it lapsed at the end of the year.
Got it, okay. Thank you.
Or until we amended, changed the budget here in a few months.
Right, it could be used toward the problems created by the new budget.
There you go.
Right. Assuming we get it in time. Okay, we have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you again, Mike. We have no unfinished business, we'll move on to other business. 3A.
Motion to authorize the town manager to apply for a CT DOT pedestrian signing and pavement marking project?
Second. Motion to second, Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I ask Derek Gregor, Town Engineer, to review this with you, please?
Good evening, everyone. This agenda item tonight is for a pedestrian signing and pavement marking project that is funded by Connecticut DOT. They've sent out a solicitation. State's been going through municipalities and upgrading pedestrian crossings on state roads with additional signage or pavement markings or a combination of the two in an effort to kind of standardize improvements throughout municipalities. They're offering this funding is available to local, localities for local roads to do the same type of improvements. The, the application came out last month. It's due June 30th. I had spoken with police department about locations that, based on their knowledge of crosswalks and crossing guards and school access routes, what they felt were the best locations to consider for, for this. There is no cost to the town, only the application to go in. I don't know, they didn't specify what the schedule of getting these funds would be, but this, the list that you have in your, in your packets had a number of locations, six locations that PD felt were the most viable for this type of project. six locations that PD felt were the most viable for this type of project. So we were here tonight just to get authorization from you to allow Town Manager to apply for funds.
Questions about this from Derek? So, uh, these, these are obviously just markings, there's no pavement changes, there's no entrance and egress changes, it's just designed to make it visibly more safe?
Yes, it's a, it's a, it could be a combination of pavement markings and/or signage that goes up. Town would be responsible for maintaining that, but the initial installations will be done by DOT. It's, it's really to reduce pedestrian fatalities or accidents that occur on local roads.
And the Police Department gave, gave these locations based on, I assume, some form of incidents or?
Yes.
Historic, okay, very good. Other questions? Amy?
Are these in order of importance or preference?
Not specifically. I could talk with PD and see if they had a preference, they gave me the list and we put it in that way, although I don't know that, I guess it would make sense if we were going to do that to prioritize those in case they don't fund all of them and only fund a certain amount, that would make sense.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask, if you had, if you knew how many intersections they were funding or if it's based on some kind of a formula?
No, the only information I have at this point is what came in that first letter that's in your packet, and it's, it's a little cryptic, doesn't give that kind of information, so I don't know, but I, I agree that's a good idea to prioritize those locations in case they do on the shortlist.
Thank you.
Okay. Another question? Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition, extensions, thank you. Thanks, Derek.
Thank you.
3B?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the Town Manager to apply for and accept a State Department of Children and Families grant of $10,000 for assistance to our Juvenile Review Board.
Second. Thank you, we have a motion, a second, and I think we have our stature.
Good evening, Kathy Bagley, Director of Social and Youth Services, and with me is Erica Tixera, the Assistant Director, and Erica's been working on this grant, so I'm gonna have her relate with you and give you an update on the grant and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Kathy.
Good evening, I'm, we're here tonight to get authorization from the Town Manager to apply and accept the grant that provides funds to assist our Juvenile Review Board with at-risk youth for the juvenile justice system. Goals of the grant are to standardize Juvenile Review Board practices and enhance and increase services as well as resources available to the youth and their families. And we've had, we've had applied for this grant a couple of years now, so this will be, I think, our fourth time applying and award, it would be awarded this grant.
So Erica, this is actually administered if it's awarded in your office?
Correct, through technically Youth Services, which is under Social Services as well.
So are these functions currently happening in some form, but this would be enhanced? Or this would be an, an additional service for at-risk youth?
Well, they're currently already taking place because we have the funds right now, we've had them for a couple of years, so they really help us streamline our case management, keep on top of working with families and getting them connected to resources within the community to stop reoffending in the future.
Gotcha. Any other questions? Mike Brel?
Are the state funds, federal funds?
They're state from Department of Children and Families, and they funnel through Youth Service bureaus.
Had they done this before in the past?
Yes, this is actually, I think, our fourth time applying for it.
Had we ever received the grant?
Yes, we have, all four times.
All four times?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Other questions? Thank you, we have a motion, a second, in front of us, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition, any extensions? Thank you. Thanks, Erica.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. 3C?
Make a motion to authorize the Town Manager to execute on behalf of the town of Weathersfield, a public entity established under the laws of the state of Connecticut, an application, and to file with the Capital Region Council of Governments for the purpose of obtaining financial assistance on the local road accident reduction program. Said application shall be made to obtain financial assistance for the roadway reconstruction and installation of safety improvements along approximately 500 feet of Middletown Avenue and the Interstate 91 overpass to the railroad tracks near the town line of the town of Rocky Hill.
Second.
Thank you. Derek, I know you're gonna give us a little walkthrough here.
Yep. Okay, my name is, again, my name is Derek Gregor, Town Engineer. Here tonight for this agenda item is seeking approval to apply for a local road accident reduction grant. This is administered by CROG, typically on an annual basis. They'll solicit projects that will help address roadway safety. It's funded by Connecticut DOT, project limitations are $50,000 to $500,000 in cost. To date, we have completed preliminary design, we've obtained inland wetlands permit approval. The Town Council has allocated funds to this project, we had applied for this project last summer. Although it was fairly competitive last year, DOT didn't accept as many projects as they normally would, from what I understand from CROG, so we didn't make the cut. Since then, we've done some more design, more improvements, we have better, better cost information. What we had allocated thus far to this project was a reduced scope from what we went in for last year with the application, we just looking at the bare minimum we had to do to try and get this to work and make it a safer condition. But now we have some better information and I can update the application, we want to submit again and see if we have better luck this time around. So I'll just walk you through the project briefly. Now, the project's located at the south end of Middletown Avenue, between I-91 overpass and the Rocky Hill town line. As we discussed earlier, this does overlap with MDC sewer project you heard about earlier this evening. This is existing conditions planned, north is to the left, so the left side of the screen is the I-91 overpass, the right side is the Rocky Hill town line and the railroad tracks. At the top of the page is the Game Club property. What we have out there now is undermining of the road, for various reasons. What, what's occurred is there's some drainage downfall that comes from the north heading south, the outlet, outlets to the little brook that you see there, that's very close to the embankment. We have an 18-inch culvert that goes underneath the road from the bottom of the sheet to the top of the sheet that is buried in the embankment. In addition to, this is kind of a low point in the road profile, and there's no curbing or catch basin structures to help get that road off the, get that stormwater runoff off the road safely, so continually washes out and tends to erode the embankment. So what's happened is we've had undermining of the roadway, three cable guide rail, utility poles that are out there. Back in 2012, the town had gone out and put in temporary, well, put in concrete barriers as a safety measure to at least address it temporarily, and it's gotten over the years to the point where even those are starting to become undermined. So we're losing road width and it's becoming more of a hazard. We've, with the roadway being the way it is in the last five years now, we've had a couple rollover accidents, pedestrian bicycle complaints, so it's a safety concern. As part of the application, we submit all the accident data we have on file, and they typically want the last three years to kind of justify the need for the project. So what you see here in yellow on the top of the, top side of the road or the east side of the road there is where the barriers are installed. That's where the, we have the embankment that drops off fairly quickly. Just a couple photos of that area, this is looking southbound towards Rocky Hill. You see the barriers, barriers do make the road fairly narrow in this area. You know, there's a fair amount of traffic that does actually come through here on a daily basis. This is a view looking north along the eastern gutter line towards I-91. As you can see, and this is an old photo from last year, you can see the signs falling over, the barriers themselves are starting to be undermined, so it is a, a safety concern, it's something the town does need to address as soon as possible. This plan is a preliminary plan where we are right now, as far as layout, what we're looking to do. Generally speaking, what we're looking to do is rebuild the embankment off the side of the road. So that would include building, putting in curbs, four-foot grass shelf, two-to-one slope down into the wetland area and allow us to put metal beam guide rail running along the side of the road here. That would blend fairly nicely with improvements Rocky Hill had done on the south side of the railroad tracks recently, they redid, did a bridge project, they had metal beam rail. It'd be kind of a continuation of the rail that's already out there with the gap being at the railroad track crossing. We will be doing as part of that reconstruction, reconstructing a portion of the road to help address the drainage issues that we have out there, we can adjust the road profile a little bit, try and get all the water with some curbing down to a controlled low point. That would be kind of in, in this area at the north end of the wetland area and get, get it off the road safely. With that existing 24-inch pipe that takes flow from the highway as well as local roads that currently comes out right into the embankment, we're looking at redirecting it a little further to the east. As you can see in blue here, we're trying to shift the swale and the flow away from the bottom of the new embankment, as well as extending that existing pipe that currently is buried in the embankment out. So addressing the fact that we'll relocate the 24-inch, extend the 18-inch out beyond the embankment, stabilize the embankment with like an erosion control turf or erosion control matting, and better control the flow coming off the roadway should, should prevent this from occurring in the future. This work does require some work onto the Game Club property immediately to the east. We have been in touch with the President, Paul O'Keefe, he's a proponent of the project, he'd happy, he's happy to see it go along. This, these improvements do require a couple small easements for drainage extensions that go onto the property, he has seen that, he's okay with that. So depending on, you know, as we move this project forward, whether it be with the local road accident reduction funds or a scaled-down version of this project, the Game Club property is on board and okay with what we're showing for impacts to their particular property. There are some wetlands and floodplain impacts, which we had to get approved through inland wetlands. There is some grading opposite the channel on the north, on the east side, rather, of the, the blue that you see, which would be the new swell flow. That's really to help better shape that area and also to provide compensatory storage volume, because we are filling into the floodplain as part of this project. We went through this with inland wetlands, I mean, technically, this embankment was there at one time and likely there when FEMA flood profiles were developed, however, we, we don't seem to have any really good mapping to show that. So to be conservative, we just said, listen, we got to fill into the floodplain to build the road embankment, we'll do some excavating on the far side within the floodplain to offset any loss of flood storage. And, you know, that was acceptable to them. As, as we stated earlier, and as shown on this plan, MDC does have a sewer line coming through this area. This area's gonna have a combination of the tunneling they had talked about and open cut. We are in negotiations with them based, once, what they're doing is adjusting the alignment of their pipe. So originally, they were gonna be on the east side of the road digging a fairly large hole right in the embankment. Sounds like with some changes they're looking for to try and have minimal impact, they might be moving that away from the wetlands to the other side of the road. So we're still working, that's still in flux as far as what they're gonna be doing and how much of this restoration they would've been required to do anyway. You know, clearly I've spoken with them, we have a dangerous condition out there now, I wouldn't expect them to come through and then walk away and leave us with that, and they agreed. So there's some portion of this that MDC will be doing. Because at this point, that's still in flux and we haven't really tied down that amount of work or the cost associated with that, for the purpose of this application, we're gonna discuss the fact that MDC is coming through, and they are gonna be doing work in this area, but I'm gonna kind of disregard the fact that they're gonna be doing some of that and put, put that cost just into our project for now, at least for the application, to see, you know, how we come out with that. As I stated, this, this would extend to Rocky Hill had reconstructed the road on Old Main Street on the south side of the project area here, so this would be kind of an extension of that. As well as, as you, you heard, MDC's gonna be going up Middletown Avenue and Mill Street, the town does have plans post their project for those areas that they're not improving, to come through and do some milling and overlay at, at the end of the project, so we can have this, this whole area, you know, cleaned up nice when the project's all done. So as I stated earlier, you know, as we're looking for is approval at this point to put in the application. I have spoken to CROG about anything they could offer us and what we can do to improve the application, so it'll be an updated version of what we submitted last year, and, you know, hope for the best that we can at least get some funds out of this. Worst case, if again, we don't get selected, as I stated, we do have some funds allocated to the project that we will maximize and use as efficiently as possible to at least address the safety concern we have. So anyone have any questions I could answer?
Just the timing, Derek, of the MDC piece, I know, obviously, you're, you're talking about that, and you're in discussion now, is it generally the timing appropriate, assuming you were to get funded for this? Would it work out timing-wise, or are you gonna have to do some juggling here?
We might have to do some juggling, because they're starting their project at this location. And they do have a pretty good stretch from here to the treatment plant, that's gonna take some time. So I haven't seen a real, I haven't really seen a schedule yet, they've given us some very rough numbers. My guess is if funds were approved, it would probably be something for next spring at the earliest, so we may have them come through and do some temporary improvements in this area, and then follow it up with our project. You know, in the event that, we don't, I assume if we get this funding, it would have to go through a full bid process. Obviously, the contractor that's working out there has expressed interest in doing it for us, so, you know, maybe he'd be competitive, because he's already mobilized on site, otherwise, we would have them fix it to a certain point and then bid out the remaining work. If we did not get the money, then we've been talking with them about, you know, since they're mobilized, we may be able to get some cost reductions with them being onsite already.
What's your current estimate on this project if MDC is not involved?
If, if they were not involved, we're still working on fine tuning the numbers. I think last time we put it in, it was around $450,000, somewhere in that area, and that includes, CROG requires us to put in a 25% contingency, 10% incidental, so it really inflates the numbers, you know, to a number that doesn't seem reasonable for what we're doing, that's just part of the CROG's process to be conservative.
Right.
The reason why we had asked for not to exceed the $500,000 is because I'm still kind of working on those numbers to figure out exactly what makes sense for this project. I don't wanna, you know, at the same time, I don't wanna go too high and put too much in and not get selected, but I wanna make sure we, if we're gonna get this funds, we try and do it the right way, instead of trying to piecemeal it together with, you know, whatever limited capital we have.
Amy?
So off of that, it's, I see here it says that if the project's selected, the town's responsible for all design right-of-way costs and 10% of the contract cost for construction. And then I see the town's allocated $100,000 in CIP funds for the project. So does the $100,000, would that cover the design right-of-way and 10% of the contract cost?
The design's done, we've done in-house, so that's all set. If, if we were at the $500,000 threshold, we would owe $50,000, and the, the limited right-of-way or drainage easement we would need for the project would be minimal, so yes, that, that, I feel that money would cover.
Thank you.
Mike Brel? Couple years back when Rocky Hill did the, the bridge right there, do we know how much that cost? The, just the town of Rocky Hill, by any chance?
I don't, I don't have numbers on what that project cost then.
The state funded a portion of that bridge replacement, if I'm not mistaken, though, correct?
That might be, it was before my time, to be honest with you, I don't, I don't know what the specifics of that project were.
Would there be any state funding possibly available for this stretch just north of that?
North of their project in our project area? Well, these are DOT state funds through this application.
Just, they would go through CROG?
They go, yeah, CROG administers it, so they do the solicitation, they do the preliminary evaluation of projects, then they make, they recommend projects to DOT, and then they do their final assessment, who's gonna get the funds. It is officially state money, although CROG is the administrator of the program.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any requirement that you have to use the funds? Soon we get it. Is there a timeline that you have to start the project? I don't wanna be caught in a-
You know, that's, I, I, I think our, our timeline to follow MDC is well within, I, I don't know the, exactly that number with that time, I'm sure there is, they want the money, they typically wanna use the money as quickly as they can, so I suspect if it was next year's project, the funds may not even be really available till next construction season anyway, so I, I don't see a problem with getting this done after MDC comes through, particularly, 'cause, I mean, I'd be a little more concerned if they were starting at the other end, and they were gonna be here two years from now, then we, I'd really have to look into that, but being that they're starting in this area, I don't, I don't see any issue with that.
Okay. And Derek, you had mentioned, I think, that there's still some temporary shore-up that's happening, you know, as we, this year as well, regardless of this, and is that funded and covered? And do you have a plan for that?
Yeah.
It's not, obviously, not as extensive, but-
Yes, and that will, that, that too will also follow MDC's project. So assuming that they're probably moving out of this area this year, we would try and use the money that we have available to at least do the minimum. The minimum meant that, you know, maybe instead of putting in some catch basins at the low point and piping it out, which would be ideal, maybe we just gotta do some leak-offs, or possibly, maybe instead of such extensive road reconstruction in this area, we just reconstruct the portion of the road that's right along there and come back later and do a milling overlay, you know, once MDC's out, when we do the rest of the work. So I, 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 I feel between MDC's contribution as far as what they have to do and our scaled-back scope, that we're, when we talk with CIP, we were pretty close to what we felt we needed, we may be a little bit short, but we were gonna kind of evaluate that once we had better information from MDC.
Great.
One follow-up, the, so the sign that was in that picture, has that been, is it that way now, or has it been fixed?
You know, this was last year's picture, so honestly, I don't remember, it, it may be like- be like that now.
Can we have someone go out?
Yeah, we certainly can.
And take care of that?
Yeah, I see it's in this photo. It was summertime. So yeah, it was, it may have been fixed, but I can check on that.
That's kind of telltale of how everything is just going to the east.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to see because of all the vegetation here. But the guide rail you see at the bottom, that three cable rail, as you get further to the north is just, it's just gone. It's really not there anymore. It just has sunk so much over the years.
Thank you, Derek. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have two bids this evening. For eight?
Motion to accept the bid from Calvert Safe and Lock, including alternate number one for $49,448.
Okay.
Motion in a second. I think Mr. Bushy is here this evening for any questions on this bid.
Good evening.
Hi Fred.
Before you have bid number 201-7-9 for the replacement of doors at the, doors and related hardware at Charles Wright and two doors at the Hamner Elementary School. Calvert Safe and Lock was the apparent low bidder at $49,448. I vetted these folks out through the, the recommendations that they've had, plus I've talked to some folks that have used these folks in the past here through our Connected Buildings and Grounds Association. And they seem to be a very good vendor. So I'd like to bring these folks forward.
Questions for Fred on this? Amy, I'm sorry.
I don't care. You want to go? Go ahead. I was wondering about the time of completion. It says 120 days, but would this work be completed during the summer when something is empty?
Most should be able to be, to be done during the summer. There's probably about a four, there is a four or six week lead time to get materials. I've spoken to their, their CEO actually this morning about this. He was out to measure, do some final measurement of, of the openings. And he seems confident that he can get these parts within, let's say, five weeks or so and get them installed before a school actually starts. So I don't think there'll be any, any intrusion on, on the school day.
And then the other question was, does this complete the project at these two schools or where does it bring us in the process?
This completes both the Emerson Williams School, which is, I'll just bring you up to speed here. Emerson Williams and Charles Wright as far as doors and hardware. I've done a couple of doors that were needed at the Hamner School. If I were to move forward with any other doors and hardware, which I do think is still, still up as far as top priority, as far as security is concerned, I would move to High Crest School. But then again, I, we've had ongoing talks with our facility committee within the Board of Education on how they want to move forward on renovations of other schools. I don't want to duplicate my efforts here if, if we're going to bring forward a school that's going to be renovated here within the next few years. I don't know if that's going to happen, but the talks, you know, surely we have to have these talks now. So I'd like to have, before I bring anything else forward, I'd like to hear from our committee at hand, see where, where they are, what they think about moving this forward. Doors in, doors in, outside doors and hardware are kind of a, a little bit of a pet peeve of mine, especially in, at High Crest where there's a lot of outside doors to each individual classroom. So that's where I would move next if, if it dictates that, you know, to move forward like that.
Okay, but Charles Wright will be completed?
Charles Wright would be completed as far as, yeah.
And then Hamner, these are just the replacement of doors, some doors that are necessary at this time, but not a complete?
That's correct.
For that building?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So Fred, just, I know you had in there some notation about no substitutes and then the specification sheet is referring to specific types. Is that a matching type with existing hardware that replaced at other schools?
That's a match what we have existing, Mr. Montanari, within, within the Weathersfield High School now, within Emerson Williams, within, it will be Charles Wright. It's all very good, solid brand that I think is, is needed within our, within our buildings. We can carry one line of parts instead of having to carry multiples in our trucks for any repairs that have to be done.
So the system is sort of unified if you have to replace a key core or something?
That's correct. One, one could be used from the other. I could take from one and use from another if, if need be.
Seems to me four or five years ago, I thought all the grammar schools had upgrades to the locks and the doors. Following Sandy Hook, there was not?
No, sir. That's when we actually started, Mr. Berry. You know, on this quest to kind of move forward with this, we replaced some door cylinders, but nothing hardware-wise or door-wise. Most of the doors that we have, exterior doors in, in our elementary schools are all full glass doors. And I'm trying to get away from that full glass scenario where you put, you'd have a, you have a style in the middle of the door for smaller pieces of glass within. So you could just see out instead of a full pane of glass. And that's something we, I started to do maybe five years ago, four or five years ago. But no, that wasn't, that's not, it's, it's something that we started kind of after Sandy Hook. I had a little bit going on before that with doors that were actually falling apart that, you know, needed to be replaced. But we got a little more aggressive when, when this happened.
Other questions?
Hi Fred. How many bids were actually submitted?
Four.
And what was the cost spread between this particular one?
Cost spread, we have, we have between the, the recommended vendor at here. The bid was put out because I wasn't sure if I have enough funding to complete what I wanted to complete. So what I did is I put five sets of, five double doors out at Charles Wright and the two at Hamner as a base bid. And I put five as an alternate. So there was two figures that came in. And, and going from low bid to high bid, we had for the two, for lump sum cost for the, the vendor that I'm bringing forward here was 49,448 as compared to a local vendor here in Rocky Hill at 68,970. But there was quite a swing in between.
So the 49,448 is for the Derby Company?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just doing some quick math. So that's the lump sum cost plus alternate one?
Yep. And if, even if you were to take the, our local bid, our local bidding preference at 10% to knock that down, if we went to the second, which was Connecticut Carpentry in, on, who was located on the Silvestine Highway, but in Rocky Hill, even knocking that, that firm down 10%, brought them down to 59,029, which is still $10,000 above what Calvert Safe and Lock has brought forward. And they have met all the intention of the spec that I brought forward.
And kind of a, I guess tangentially, similar to what Paul was asking, the scope being so narrowly defined, you're saying it helps with what we have currently working on other doors, other hardware?
That's correct.
I'm just curious, why just one product? Could there be others that are better, others that are similar?
Good, solid products, number one. Door, door closers that are guaranteed for 20 years, guaranteed, that I get absolutely through the factory, through Allegion Corporation. Lock mechanisms, guaranteed 10 years that I get through Allegion Corporation. Panic hardware, Von Dupren products, guaranteed for 30 years. So 20 years down the road here, if, if we have a piece of panic hardware that needs to be replaced, this gets replaced at, it may cost us the labor portion of that, but the panic bar itself will be at no cost to us.
And there's no other brand that offers those kind of warranties?
Not that type of warranty, no. Not, not that I've experienced here in, in my tenure.
Do you have any independent reviews of this product?
Ah, yes. Yeah, I've had, I, many different, many different areas, many different folks that have used this, excuse me, used this product right along the line. And absolutely no problems, no warranty problems.
Is that something that you could produce for the council so that we could look at it?
I can get you something, yes.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
Tony?
Two things, Fred. Number one, by using the same product in all, all schools, this will also eliminate the number of various master keys your tradespeople have to carry from school to school?
That's, that's one of my intentions, Mr. Martino. Yes, absolutely.
Okay. And the other is, based on the funding you're using here, I know in the past you've had some general fund money as well as capital money and some grant money. Once you spent this money, what is left in your various accounts to do future doors? Is it wiped out or do you still have funds left over?
This, this would bring this to, I believe that we had about $53,000 and change left in CIP. This at, at 49, because it's pretty close to what, what we've had left for that. If, if I were to move forward with anything else, obviously I'd be asking for, probably for High Crest School. Or again, as I just explained, I would wait until and see what facilities committee would like to bring forward. If, you know, are we going to put another school out there? We're going to try to do that. You know, what's, you know, what's the goal of the board moving forward here? I wouldn't want to entertain something, a project such as this, if we're going to, for instance, Hamner School, if, if that's the next school to be raised and we put something else, I wouldn't want to put the funding into that building. I'd rather put it into one of our other buildings here to enhance those.
Just another follow-up Fred on this because I, normally speaking, when we see bids for product line, we don't see a particular product name or variation like this Von Dupren is a specific. I'm just curious, like, just to dumb it down a little bit, that particular identification with no substitutions locks in, obviously there's at least four bidders that use that product, obviously that's available. Like, these four companies, would it be likely they would have six different types of locking and panic bar mechanisms, but this one is one manufacturer that you like and know has good credibility and you're using?
This has got to, this manufacturer is, it's actually four different manufacturers for the products that we're using, Paul, within, within the scope of the job. They're all backed by the, the Allegion Corporation and they're all backed by the extensive warranty that they offer.
Yep.
And what I'm trying to do here is get the best sort of warranty for the district that I possibly can get.
Yeah, I'm just following up a little bit what Jody was saying too because four bid, but there were eight that took the bid. And I assume because that specific substitution option was not offered, I'm just, again, rhetorically wondering how we know that the four that didn't bid don't have a suitable product but couldn't bid because they don't have that product?
I, I can't answer that.
Okay. But it is a little bit unusual to direct a bidder to a specific manufacturer.
I've been successful in the past with that.
Okay.
And I'm trying to use my success as, as my, as my goal moving forward.
Just one follow-up on the, so you're only putting two doors in at Hamner School because of possible renovations there?
Well, the, both doors are kind of falling apart as we speak. We're going to try to get, I, when I did find out we had these monies left, we added those two doors to the, to the mix of, of what was left at Charles Wright.
But you didn't want to do any other doors there because of potential renovations?
It could be, I'm just saying potential.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? Mike?
Thanks Fred. We've completed, or you've completed, the door replacement at Emerson already?
Correct.
Was that done through, did we use Calvert?
We did not use Calvert.
But we did use the hardware that we're specking in this?
That is correct. Two, two separate contractors did that, that building, Mr. Earl.
Okay. And according to you, we've had success with that hardware?
Absolutely.
Is the hardware, going off of what Paul was saying, is the hardware, is it produced here in Connecticut?
No.
Okay. And then it, is it part of a, you know, I know a lot of school construction grants have to follow certain criteria. Is it a well-known, nationally known, reputable?
Absolutely. Absolutely. This is actually what we used at Weathersfield High School.
Oh, okay. So this is, the hardware was used at Weathersfield High School under the new construction?
Yes.
Silvestine Middle School?
Silvestine Middle, I had no play in what happened at Silvestine Middle School. That was before my time, Mr. Earl. I can't, I can't really talk to that.
Weathersfield High School, Emerson, and then to Tony's point, it would match up with all?
That is correct.
Okay.
Other questions? So Fred, I ask those questions because there was a concern raised about the limit of this spec raised. And I think I connected with you a little bit earlier about this just to raise the question to educate myself. This is outside my skill set of knowledge, but I still have some uneasiness about the lock-in to this one manufacturer. And, you know, I certainly trust your judgment. This is your skill set, you know, so I'm going to defer to you on it. But I am, it's, I don't remember too many bids where the manufacturer was identified in advance. And I imagine that's probably true on a lot of products that if you identify a manufacturer, there's multiple bidders that could bid. But I'm left wondering based on that inquiry by a local company that could not bid on this because of that specific specification, no substitute, if, if in fact there are other options. And I'm not, I'm not qualified to make that judgment, of course, because, you know, you're really in a far better position. And I understand your argument about it, but I, I'm just wondering about that. It's leaving me just a little bit of a question in my mind about it. I don't know that it's earth shaking, but I still have that concern. Anything else? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, we better do a count here. Just to do a hand count. All in favor? I'm not in favor. Just asking to raise hands. One, two, three, four. And I was going to abstain because I had the discussion with one of the vendors. So I don't know if I can do it on this.
Well, if you abstain, then it's three to four. Three to, yeah, three to four passes.
Okay. I mean, I think I-
You'd have to check with the town attorney to see how that works.
Okay. Because I was planning to abstain because of that conversation. I don't think I'm qualified to make a judgment on this. So four in favor, three opposed, one abstain is the formal vote. We'll just check.
We'll check with the town attorney on that.
Okay. And we'll get back.
You all three voted no?
Aye.
Okay. We'll check.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Thank you Fred. Okay, 4B is our last item of the night.
Motion to authorize the town manager to enter into a master lease agreement with TD Equipment Finance for the financing of the Cottone Field Turf Replacement Project.
Second?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Mike O'Neill is here this evening to answer specific questions regarding the financing bid, but on the podium this evening, there's a map, it's got some green lines on it, as you know, part of the alternates was to add some fencing and some gates that we didn't have numbers on at the last meeting, so we've kind of sketched out how many feet of fence and gate we need, adds up to about 715 feet of fence and some gates, which add somewhere between 20 to $25,000 to the project, and then I've given you a spreadsheet that shows with all the ads and the alternates and the fencing, comes up to about $1,156,000. So what we would propose is under the lease agreement, authorize up to $1,160,000 at the low bidder of 1.85%, and then when we get the specifics on the quantities, we'll, we'll use that number. So Mike's here to talk about the bids.
Good evening, Mike O'Neill, Finance Director. My office issued a solicitation for bids for this financing back at the beginning of the month. We received three responses. The lower, the low interest rate was, as the town manager said, 1.85%, which over seven years equates to approximately $70,000 of interest cost, and the next lowest response was 2.11% and the total interest cost at that rate was, is $86,000. Last respondent was 2.4%, $91,000 of interest cost for the seven years.
Questions about this for Mike? Easy straight forward. And the fence is included in this cost, right?
Yes.
We would ask that someone add $1,160,000 not to exceed in the financing amount at the end of that motion.
All right. Do we have to add that wording right now?
Quickly, I think in one of the first meetings we had about this, new field and the possibility of fencing, and just semantics, is it black fencing, or?
It's black.
It is black fencing? Is there any matching existing fencing that goes around to tie it in, or?
No, the, the existing fencing that runs along the west side is, well, it's black because it, well, it's brown. This will look significantly newer than the existing fencing on the exterior of the Cottone Field.
Okay. And then would this, is this fencing for security purposes, or is it for aesthetic purposes?
Currently, we use a golden rope around the field to keep people off the field during events. The athletic director asked that the fencing, this fencing be part of the project to basically keep people off the field during events, as a more formal way to do it and, and permanent way to do it.
Keeping the kids from rolling down the hill at the concession stand to the end zone.
Perhaps.
Yep. That, I've seen it, I mean, it, there's, obviously there's a liability as well.
Yeah.
Steep hill going down as well as, you know, people coming in and getting onto the field and, you know, disrupting.
How high is this fence going to be, Jeff?
Four feet.
Okay. So you can see over it, obviously.
Oh, yeah.
And it's at the field level?
Yes.
Well, it's not up the hill, it's at the bottom of the hill?
Yeah, just where it is on the map.
At the end zone.
Basically outside the safety zone of the end zones and the safety zone of the field itself. Basically where the golden rope is now, it's just, or the yellow rope.
Okay.
And three gates, one will be, you know, each at the corners and one on the north end.
If this gets approved, where are we with the project?
They're ready to go. They started submittals to Luke McCoy at the architect's office, they want to, they want to be in, they want to be well underway by July 7.
And is there, I don't anticipate this, it sounds like we're ready to go, but is there, anyway, the council, if there's anything that would potentially delay this getting done?
We don't foresee anything now, but if there is, we would reach out to you all. Weather is really going to be the only player in the game. We had a pre-construction meeting with the vendor last week, he is putting his submittals in, he would prefer to be on the field as soon as possible.
Okay, good.
To get done. And now, when we say that the playing surface will be ready on the 11th of August, but some of these, you know, fencing and netting things, like the nets between the fields, the nets on the, on the baseball field, those won't be done, but the surface will be in and certified for playing on August 11th, but there may be punch list items after that.
Understood.
Okay. Any other questions? We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Stention?
I oppose.
That includes 1.16 million.
Oh, yes, and where, do we, let's make a motion, please, to?
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed, for the original author, that's Steve Frank.
Motion to authorize the town manager to enter into a master lease agreement with TD Equipment Finance for the financing of the Cottone Field Turf Replacement Project in an amount not to exceed $1,160,000.
So it's a friendly amendment, we should just vote on that. Any other second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just the meeting minutes of June 5th?
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any changes, deletions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stention?
Abstain.
Thank you, Mike. Okay. Motion to adjourn. Oh, no, public comment, sorry, sorry out there. Didn't mean to jump the gun. That'd be received poorly, I'm sure.
Yes.
Public comment, I'm sorry. Bob, I assume you're coming back up?
Tonight, maybe I missed something, but Kathy Bagley was up here with a young lady talking about a grant where they were going to, had something to do with reaching out and connecting people with services. I didn't really understand what that group was, but it was Parks and Rec. But then, on the other hand, I heard in the past, this Weathersfield Collaborative does the same thing, reaches out, helps people, blah, 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 but we're funding both of these. Why do we have, why do we have duplication? Duplication, we don't need. That's expensive, Mayor. I think you should consider eliminating one. Also, the 2017 Local Road Accident Reduction Program, I tell you, we shouldn't have any roads that are, that are prone to accidents. With the money that we spend here in this town, you know, this is Local Road Accident Reduction Program. Why do we need a program? All of our roads should be in darn good shape. Yeah, I, I know that section of road, and I think it's pretty poor, but with all the money that we've spent, and we've just let it go, let it go, let it go, and we take on new initiatives. Typical. It's terrible. I was up here earlier, and I couldn't find what I wanted to say or highlight, and what I did find was that we have a recreation fund that I think you should use to fund Cottone turf. Recreation fund, you have $680,000 in there. You have the Community Development Fund, that's appropriate too, with 19,000, almost 20,000. You have Parks Program, and I'm staying within the parks, within this, I don't know about the development one, but the parks, the youth, and one of them's got 18,000, the social and youth services has 572,000. You have Social and Youth Services, another one, maybe that's the same amount of money, yes it is, but you would, between that, be able to fund it without financing. And you'd be using at least money that's tied into recreation, which is what Cottone Field is, and you'd leave an IOU back there for them, someday you'll pay them back. But in the meantime, forget the financing, you've got the money and you should utilize Any sensible person would go along with that, at least those that I've spoken to. I did mention also, next subject, and then I got to find it here for a second. I mentioned that I had gone through the escrow account to some degree. I haven't gone through it entirely, but I'm going to. And this is, this is an off-the- ledger account. This is an account that has a tremendous amount of activity and is not part of the Board of Education, yet it's serviced by the Board of Education. They work with it, they control it, but it's not on their books when they come before the town council with their budget. It's off-book, and I think that's wrong. I think it's wrong with the kinds of monies that they're spending in this particular account. I mean, I see oodles, eight, 10, different restaurants. Remember I was up here a month ago, two months ago, rattling off some numbers with different restaurants in town? These are, there's several of the same, and they're spending big buckaroos, they're at the same restaurants, as well as other restaurants. And this is not even authorized, none of this is authorized. I don't know who in the world signs off on, I know who signs the checks, but who in the world controls it? It's a tremendous amount of money. I see in organizations, there's printing companies that they utilize. This is for a student escrow account. We see a barn door company for 45, 2,000, 2,500 bucks. They must have built, bought a barn, maybe to store things. An escrow account? I don't think that's appropriate. They have business cards. Business cards for who? $1,300 for business cards that they charged off on. They have a number of buses, a number of buses, Durham, Daco, Premium, that they're, that they're renting, that is not part of our budget for the Board of Education. These items should be over in the budget, and when they're doing their actuals, when they're providing the actuals for you, Mayor, those expenditures should be in there. It's appropriate and it's accounting. What you have now is a mishmash of garbage. You're not following the rules, and this has been going on for years. We pay a superintendent what we're paying him, you know what we're paying him. He's in charge of this account. This account that has a lot of money coming and going, and it's damn poor accounting that he's doing, and he's educating children to become accountants and to become professionals. And I don't really want to knock Mike down, but we have had other superintendents too, I'm sure, that led the way into this mess. Of course, Mike's been there eight years now, maybe he should have cleaned it up. But I really believe that when we start looking at these types of costs, I see Apple Computer, they bought Apple Computers with, with escrow money. 1,300 bucks, 1,400 bucks, one shot, and another 1,300 bucks, another shot. It doesn't, you know, it, it doesn't, doesn't seem right, Mayor. It belongs on their books, and at the end of the day, they would tell us how much they actually spent. They don't include this. They falsify their statements. Now, it could be every darn school system in the state of Connecticut does it, and maybe that explains why Connecticut is Connecticut today. Bankrupt, heading down, there's no other way. I mean, I see a number, I see a, a number of entries, checks given to the same person who's an administrator at the school.
Thank you, Bob.
And, you know, Mayor, yeah, thank you, Bob, what are you going to do about it?
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob. You're not going to do anything about it. And that's just how it is in, in the town of Weathersfield. We do nothing about your problems. You know what they are now, Mayor. You can't say other, otherwise. You have accounting problems. Thank you very much, and I don't know what you're, and I know your auditors, from what I understand, don't even audit this account. So what you're paying them, kiss it all goodbye. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay. Yeah, I'm just being advised on the lock thing, we need five votes to pass that lock appropriation. So we have four with an abstain, so we should probably introduce a motion to table.
Can we do that if we've already voted?
Well, I think we can, I think we can, well, the introducer of the motion can, I think you can introduce in the same meeting, a motion to reconsider, but it's got to come from the favorable side, even though we don't, we need five votes, which we don't have. So we can get a motion to reconsider.
Do we need five votes to make that motion? Well, we could probably get that, so.
Yeah, I think we can get five votes to get a motion to reconsider.
Make a motion to reconsider?
You guys are on the other side, so I just want to make sure we're doing this right, because it's kind of unusual.
Yeah, you talked me out of it. You talked me out of it.
Out of what?
Out of voting.
Oh, yeah, I know, and, and again, I mean, we can, let's get a motion to reconsider and just have a discussion for a minute.
Make a motion to reconsider. Petlock's motion?
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and so just for brief discussion, I abstain because a vendor that was locked out approached me and spoke with me, so I felt that I probably should vote, but I mean, that's not really a conflict, but I, you know, I just think, I followed the same channel of thinking that Jody had, and I, and my concern was, when we were doing it, that we, we should look at that topic of that lock-in to a spec with no exchanges, limited the number of vendors, and perhaps, again, to Jody's point, might have prevented us from getting a like or better quality for less, when, you know, with so many vendors that came, so right now, as we sit today, we don't have an appropriation on that, so we have to either ask for, to go back out to bid, or if we want to wait till the next council meeting when we have 10, to see if we get five votes, but, you know, I kind of feel like we...
Paul, if we wait until next time, maybe we can ask Mr. Bushy if the specific locks and things he's asking for, any contractor can obtain through a wholesaler, the same wholesaler. It's not locked in where it's, you know, locked into one or two distributors. If that's the case, then these other, you know, other contractors just didn't, you know, do their homework to get a price from them, or just wanted to use what they were familiar with.
Yeah.
That might sway, you know, somebody's decision.
I think Jeff can communicate back to Mr. Bushy that there is a concern about this bid spec being that narrow, and that... and that there is at least one vendor who has raised the question, that I'm aware of, that is saying a like quality or better can be offered if it's not narrowly written that way. So I think, I don't know how urgent it is to get this lock package done for Charles Wright, but even if he goes back out and has discussion with the vendors that came, who could not submit because of that spec, I think he could at least examine them submitting like material and getting some pricing and revisit it.
Well, it's a closed bid. It's a formal bid process, so it's-
He'd have to reopen it.
He'd have to redo the bid process, using hardware he isn't familiar with.
Yeah, I mean, I, again, as I said in the public discussion, I'm not skilled enough to answer whether Fred's position on this is, you know, justified or not. But it seems to me, when you have four bidders and you had eight, 10, and at least one is expressing concern that with that tight a spec, I mean, most of the time when we get specs for a bid, it's not directing the bidders to a manufacturer. You know, it can be piping and lighting, fixtures like the pool. It's like, oh, we're going to have, uh, you know, Crest Mechanical lights. Okay, that limits it down, or, you know, whatever. And, and so I understand Fred's point, and maybe if he can make a more compelling argument if, if the others are offered. But seeing as I think there is a question about this that has been raised, and, um, it's, it's leaving me uneasy that we have, in fact, locked this bid in too tight, based on what, you know, was at least exchanged. Now, that may not be the case, but, um, so at the end of the day, what I'm thinking is, we need to direct Fred back to revisit this. Is that your counsel, Jeff? Because I need some direction on this. It's kind of unusual.
I don't, I don't know. I don't know.
Paul, could we ask him to approach the vendors that did not bid and ask why they did not bid? Is that an appropriate thing to do?
I mean, I, I think the answer's going to be, they don't use that product. But they, at least one that I'm aware of that approached said, "My product is better, it's less expensive, and I'm being locked out because I'm not allowed to try to substitute." The, the point I would probably say to Fred is, um, allow the substitute and examine it. You know, if, if somebody comes in with a substitute lock and you examine it and you say, "It's inferior." Let, you know, come and do your dog and pony show. Show it to me. I can put it next to the other one, and you can verify that this can be done, then at least, but if then his argument prevails that I looked at it and it's not substitutable to the other, you know, we're going to be carrying extra keys, the cores can't be swapped, you know. But at least if you've, if you've allowed somebody to present it, I think we have a better chance to say we've examined it properly.
So why don't we ask those questions next time? Rather than reject, table this, rather than rejecting it at this point, table it, because you've got it on the table to reconsider. Ask Fred those questions about the interoperability of these different locks, if they truly are night and day or 180, 80-degree distance and not compatible with one another. And he has selected this based upon the quality and his record, there are four vendors that can provide this, this system.
Okay.
So I think we need to find out, you know, is it truly an inoperable system where, you know, they can't work together?
Okay.
I think-
And they're Silstein, too.
I think to Tony's point, though, we should also find out if these vendors can provide it, but don't want to.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Or they're not registered with that distributor.
Right, right.
Yeah, that might be a locked-in kind of thing. So, right, so yours, we should have a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Okay. Let me entertain a motion to table.
Motion to table?
Can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All right. And so you'll direct that back.
I will. Now, our next meeting's not till third week of July.
I, I, I don't think there's urgency on this, to be honest. It's not like the field or one of the other projects. I think, you know, I mean, frankly, a lot of these projects, to get approved, they don't get started for months anyway, so I think it'd be better to answer this question.
We do want, though, just to that point, we do want as much of it done during the summer months as possible, so.
Well, I mean, I think Fred can get on it, because you're going to communicate that to him. And if need be, if he wants to have a special meeting, because it's that time-sensitive, then we can try to get a special meeting.
Jeff, if you go back to the notes or the minutes of the meeting, I had asked him for a specific thing.
Yeah, you wanted warranty information.
An independent product review. If he could provide that, we could all read it, come to the next meeting with verifiable questions. I think that might be helpful.
Okay, everybody cool on that? All right. I can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.